This stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Brian Michael would be sitting in the audience.
We good?
One for the first.
We good?
We're good.
All right. Thanks for going to call the April Graphics Commission meeting into session. Jamie, we have some preliminary business?
Yes, we do have one issue after last month's meeting. Recall that you, Ryan, were elected as board or commission chair. We forgot to elect a vice chair in case you had confused yourselves. So now you seem to be confusing yourself, so we might need to fill your spot.
We talked through that a little bit.
Okay.
But I think I can still run the meeting at least for today.
Okay.
But.
In case you're not here though.
Yeah. So do we nominate somebody?
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate Mike Hoy.
Okay. He's the second longest-serving.
Can I second?
Second.
Ms. Augustine seconds. Okay.
Roll is second.
You can't second yourself.
No, well, Ms. Augustine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, so can we?
Accept the nomination.
Oh.
You accept the nomination?
You can't force them into the position.
Well.
Do we have to vote on it?
Yes.
Can we call the roll then?
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
I was thinking.
Mr. Rumble?
Yes.
And Chair Cooper?
Yes, and apparently it's approved. Congrats. I don't think we had a vice chair before.
You were the vice chair.
Oh, I was.
I didn't know that.
Fair enough.
Put that on my resume. Who knew?
And the next preliminary matter before we get into our regular agenda. This is Kevin Wheeler with the Department of Development. On your agenda should say what the preliminary matter is. I don't have it in front of me, but it's an update on the news on the city of Columbus.
Great.
Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Again, my name is Kevin Wheeler. I'm with the city's development department. I've been with the city for a long time, the city planner. And this update of the zoning code is a collaborative effort between development and the building and zoning services department. We can start the slide.
Absolutely.
Okay, so our effort is entitled Zone In. And really, I think every, you guys, like many of our commissions, are in a unique position to have a sense of how fast our region is growing. Columbus itself grew by 120,000 new residents for 2010 to 2020. The region grew about overall another 120,000 or so, so pushing 250,000. You know, these pictures on this particular slide, Intel, BPI Logistics, Aperiod, Honda and LG Diary Plan. We're growing because of our environment. And it's unique within the state and within the region. Growth brings challenges and opportunities. And really, a lot of what we are doing as a city is reassessing the ways that we've managed growth in the past. Because our future really is different. We're growing up more than out. And it's time for us to consider the implications of that. And so we're looking at Linkus, which is an effort with the county, TOTA, MoC to bring improved transit to the region. We have a Columbus housing strategy that really is focused on how do we address the growing housing gap in our community and what that means for affordability. We have a team with the city that's really looking at how do we prepare our future or prepare for a future that is more unstable environmentally, one that allows us to be resilient. We have done work like Insight 2050 that is a regional consideration of the growth patterns that make sense for our community. And then finally, Zone In, and Zone In is clearly focusing on our zoning code. We did an assessment of the zoning code wrapped up a year and a half ago. And we had five key takeaways. And all this work is available on our website. You can read the folder board. The takeaways were, one, that the standards are not tailored to local conditions. And an example of what that means is that we have the same parking requirement for Marion Village, part of the Near East, that we do if we solve them all, 160. The code doesn't really know the difference between an urban environment with great transit service, bike, you know, ability to bike and walk and so on, and one that's totally different. The code doesn't prioritize housing and transit needs equitably. As I'm talking a little bit further, you know, in many of our places that are best suited to accommodate growth, housing, new jobs, code doesn't support it. And without denser development in more focused areas, it's difficult to support the transit that our region consistently says it wants. We have an overreliance on site-by-site negotiated zoning activities. 96% of Columbus City Council's zoning actions are site-specific in nature, which means that you never can just look at the map and the code, but you've got to look at the ordinance to determine what set of conditions apply to that site, allowing that project to go forward. And over time, when council variance is outnumbered rezonings, when it's difficult to do even the most central projects without a variance process, that tells you that the underlying code hasn't really kept pace with where we're at currently, much as where we're trying to go. The multi-layered scattered decision-making process creates uncertainty, causes confusion. People don't understand what's going on, and they don't understand it, they have doubts. And then the code isn't user-friendly. It really takes, you know, a level of expertise. And no user, no zoning code is, you know, super user-friendly, but ours is extra challenging. So ultimately, the zoning code is not supporting where we're trying to go as a community. And mayor, city council have prioritized updating the code. So where do you start? Cities, 290,000 parcels, 205 square miles. It's incredibly complex, updated zoning code. You can't just start and do everything at once. So we're really starting with key corridors in our community. These are the main streets of our community, the places where improved transit, housing options and jobs can be focused. The community plans, we have dozens of adopted community plans across the city. These plans consistently say West Broad Street, East Main Street, Cleveland Avenue, High Street. These are the most important streets in our community, and these are where the action should be. These streets largely already accommodate a mix of uses. And they have infrastructure and services to support additional investment. In many cases, they've lost activity and investment over time. So they're often operating in, you know, less than even their 1950s capacity. These are, this is a pattern of growth and development that really ultimately is environmentally and physically sustainable, focusing growth. And what we see is that really in these corridors, we have a lot of existing barriers to investment. And really, it's very difficult to do almost anything without, again, going through variance in these other processes. So the code update, and Dana, I'm going to pause and talk about pictures. It'll go forward too fast, but the code update will focus on housing and commercial uses as well as standards for such things as parking, bike, building design. Picture on the bottom is Mount Burton Avenue in 1960. It was taken by Kojo Komano. And, you know, I think when you look at that corridor and you look at the activity level, and you look at the mix of uses, residential, retail, office, et cetera, you know, that clearly was functioning as a center of that community. It's not working in quite the same way today, but we feel that it can again. We feel that these are still the places in a city that's growing up more than out that have a lot of potential for our future. The picture on the top is, some of you may know, that's River and Rich. That's a kind of project that was done by Casto just across the state river, East Front. And that's a mixed-use building and site, townhouses to the right that go back off Ridge Street and then apartments above retail. So, okay, we're starting with corridors because we can't do everything at once. And we feel like corridors represent our biggest opportunity to really have an impact. So which corridors? The effort here really looked at where do we have transit today? Code routes, code service. Where are we planning improved transit? Bus rapid transit, that's part of the Linkus program. Where do we have plan recommendations that are endorsing particularly mixed use? But also higher density residential and commercial. We have commercial zoning overlays that were created largely to address some of the shortcomings of the underlying code. What is the existing code zoning pattern in these areas? And then site-level considerations. And by that I mean, you know, you look at Eastland. Eastland has been recently zoned and rezoned in a way that allows a tremendous mix of uses and an extremely high density. So that's a large area that candidly already is functioning in the way that, you know, it probably can. Meanwhile, Eastland Mall, former mall site, an area that may not tick all the boxes for factors and considerations. But if there are things that we can do in terms of the zoning code to prime the pump for investment, we want to do that. I want to say that we recognize it's only one piece of the puzzle here. We could update the zoning code tomorrow, and it could be, you know, what everybody wants it to be, and that doesn't mean investment costs. But it is a piece. Site-level considerations also include, you know, recognition that we don't have zoning oversight for Ohio State University main campus. We exclude cemeteries, things like that. So, next slide. What we came up with are these initial progress areas. These are, this is not at the time where we're reckoning changes. This is, this is basically the beginning. This is a, I'm not sure why the slides are bringing this player. It's a start, not the answer. And so when you go to our website, and there are data informations in that booklet that you have, you'll be able to find an interactive map. You can drill down to the personal level to show where we're focusing our attention. We're going to be going through a lot of additional analysis, community engagement, before we start making recommendations about that change. Excellent. Just a few facts about these corridors, and we're almost done. It's over 140 miles, or we're reviewing both sides that we're focused on. 11,500 parcels lie within these areas, 32 adopted plans, dozens of base zoning districts, 1,000 variances can be in place in these corridors. 35% of these corridors, in terms of frontage, have a height limit of 35 feet. That's the same height limit that's in place in single-family neighborhoods. And interestingly, you know, with the adopted zoning in 1923, there are four height limits, the lowest of which was 50 feet. Most of these corridors were higher than that in many cases. And then residential development, residential uses are restricted to over 80%. They're either prohibited outright or they're limited to the second or third floor. And when you look at the height limits and parking requirements, and you say you can't put residential on the ground floor, what ultimately emerges is really an inability to do residential in corridors period. It's not practical. And, you know, one of the things that these corridor zonings today reflect is a historic retail pattern that we've moved away from. The days when we could build the ground floor of all these corridors with retail is largely over. And so we have to be adaptive to this, because we're a big part of this city. Not to say we couldn't do retail, but to say that's the only use, that the only type of category of uses is really not working. Next slide. Next steps and timeline. Again, no recommendations at this point. Remaining of the year, additional analysis and community engagement. We have an advisory committee that we meet with monthly that's helping us to really give us advice and feedback on this work as we go forward. We're working to reach groups that are often missing from this discussion. I want to, I just want to say that I think Columbus, like many cities, when we do this work around zoning and planning, we're often not hearing from, you know, important portions of our community. Renters, lower-income folks, younger folks, minority, our constituencies in our community. And we want to do more to reach out and hear from a broader range of folks as part of this work. We are proposing to bring updates forward, proposing updates forward next year. That will involve a lot of community conversation and notice. And any changes to the code, as this board understands, require city council approval. Beyond this first phase focusing on corridors, we'll then be looking at the neighborhoods or the other aspects of the code. I think that's it. One more slide. This is our website, lots of stuff on it. And then those are some of the community conversations we're holding in May into June, focusing on topics like housing, on our main streets, business, et cetera. So I think that that's it. I'll stop if you have questions. I'll be happy to do my best. And mostly just wanted you guys to be aware of this work and have a chance to engage. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions, anyone? Sure.
Somebody just texted me so that our stream isn't working, so.
Yeah, we have a bad stream code. That's why we were fumbling in the beginning, but we are recording it.
Okay. And so I did have a question. Um. Never mind. I answered my own question.
Okay, well, if you have questions after this, please let Jamie know. They can connect you with James, who was here on. And Dave has some cards that we wanted to hand out because these have the update, the upcoming community events. That booklet that we shared with you, I think, has the Glenwood Rec Center as the first reading. That's actually changed to Reed. So I don't want you to show up at Glenwood for a housing conversation. Be elected, forgotten. So the cards, maybe you can just get those to staff and they can share those, have the updated information.
Thank you much. Much needed, much needed improvement, again.
Go ahead.
Yes, Kevin. I'm with, well, Columbus Sign Company, so we do a lot of sign work and so forth. The hardest thing we have, have to figure out is if a client calls up, you know, we go on the website and to really find out which overlay, which, you know, group, all that is pertinent to their, you know, to what the client might want signage-wise. So website-wise, if there's a way that can make it really easy and, and I'm just pointing this out as probably the biggest challenge we have. All, there's a ton of sign contractors that want to make wonderful signs and want to do it in an efficient manner and so forth. But whatever could direct us in that, you know, in that manner is kind of an important thing. But that's all.
Sure, I appreciate that. I think one of the benefits of this work is it gives us a chance to reassess some of the ways that we manage that kind of information. And we want it to be more accessible, transparent. And I will say that overlays are a great example, Mr. Hoy. Something that, you know, our objective would be to see, you know, are we able to develop a code that really addresses some of those standards that the overlay is trying to get at? So that we can, you know, update the base code and not need an overlay. Now, because, you know, at some point, when overlays are dominant, or dominant, it says, okay, well, let's look at base code.
I, yeah, I had one conflict and it wasn't a big deal, got it resolved. But it was a little bit less allowable than the regular code. And it didn't know it until I got towards the end of it. And then, of course, the graphics, people doing the permits and all that, they look it up and go, oh, I need to change this. So anyways, but that, I get all that. I understand what you're doing.
Thank you very much for your time. And again, please reach out to staff and they'll connect us again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We can go ahead and call our first case, Jamie?
Sure. And before we do that, I just also wanted to say, I forgot to point out, our new graphics commissioner, Aaron Rumble. Thanks, Aaron, for joining the meeting. You're welcome. We're going to start.
All right, we'll call case number MC23-001, 700 Children's Drive. But before we do that, we'd like to swear people in. So our city attorney here, who's on staff, is excited to swear everyone in. So anybody that believes they're going to give testimony tonight, including city staff, would you please raise your right hand and listen to the oath?
Feel like I'm filing, burning my teeth. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say I do.
I agree.
I do.
Great job. Well done. Okay, who's, is this?
First one's mine.
All right, Jamie, fire away.
Okay, the first one is 700 Children's Drive. GC23-001. 700 Children's Drive located primarily along the north side of East Livingston Avenue, South Grant Avenue, the South 18th Street. The site is comprised of 15 parcels. It's within the Livingston Avenue Area Commission, the Columbus South Side Area Commission, and the Near East Area Commission. The 80-acre site is developed with the NY Children's Hospital campus. Surrounding uses are primarily single-unit residential to the north, east and south, with commercial to the west. The app can propose to repeal the existing graphics plan, which was just approved last year, GC22-010, and replace it with this current proposal, which will include all previous signs as covered in GC22-010 and the previous one of that, which was repealed and replaced, GC16-016. The additional sign that's being proposed today will include 10 new donor-name wall signs, three directed towards South 18th Street, two directed towards East Livingston Avenue, East of Parsons, one directed towards South Grant Avenue, one directed towards Interstate 70, and three directed internally. The two comments from the Planning Division and Division of Track Management from the last iteration, I forgot to update those. But essentially, the Columbus City Way Plan policies stated the proposal is largely consistent with these guidelines, so they're in approval. And the Division of Track Management comment is not applicable, as the comment was for a ground sign. These are all wall signs. However, the Livingston Avenue Area Commission, the Columbus South Side Area Commission, and the Near East Area Commission all recommend approval. City staff will recommend approval as a need for additional signage is necessitated by the expansion of the overall campus and a dire need for identification and direction. And Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to go through each sign that's being proposed and their location, we can do that first slide.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Yes. So again, the first two being proposed are, sorry, directed toward South 18th Street. There's three of them, two on this building, one on the south building. So these are the two on the northern building. I'm sure if we put the southern building in there. The next one would be the three directed towards, so those are the three directed towards South 18th. The next two directed towards East Livingston, which again are two and two at the very front of the main building, followed by two directed towards East Livingston Avenue, East of Parsons, those are those two. Two towards South Grant Avenue. One directed towards Interstate 70. And finally, three that are directed internally.
Maybe we should let the applicant have a nice big slide and.
That might be that.
Can you gentlemen, please take your name for the record, please?
Scott McFlure, Director of Design and Construction with White Orange.
And Tim Marical with Planet Studios, where I consult to the hospital on their signage.
Great. If you want to go ahead and present the case?
Sure, sure.
And I don't know if these would help. They're kind of the abbreviated version of what Jamie had up there.
So as Jamie mentioned, and did much better job than I'm probably going to do, so appreciate it. We're talking about six basic locations on the campus. I'm going to start on the west side of campus and move to the east. Furthest west, along Grant and Livingston is the Livingston Ambulatory Center. We're looking for two, the opportunity for potential, two on-building signage signs, one to the north and one to the southwest, identifying a donor name. The third one is a ground, it's, we'll call it a pedestrian level. It's on the canopy. It would be a small 18-inch set of letters on the canopy as those people come into the drive that identifies the building and the donor. RB4, Research Building 4, which is under construction and opening soon. Looking to add one more. Right now, it has two identifiers on it. There's one on the west and one on the east. We're looking to place one on the north that would be visible from the highway as you approach campus. And that's the Abigail Wexner Research Institute letters. On the conference center, we're here to look at one on-building sign potential, which is facing into the campus, as Jamie identified. And then, excuse me, item five identifies a digital ground sign that was added by the hospital. The purpose of that is to, this, this building here is to host conferences and conventions for medical personnel across the country. And that's just really an identifier out in front to promote the different programs and conferences that are going on. Again, it's a ground plane sign, but a digital function. Crossing over Parsons, D, the D building is the large tower, the 12-story tower that sits on the corner of East Livingston and Parsons. Looking to have the approval of an on-building sign up top for a donor. And then again, down below on the canopy would be the same treatment that we have over here on Livingston. Ambulatory, more of a pedestrian-level sign. Going back all the way over to South 18th, we've got the Child Care Center, which would be an on-building sign. It really doesn't allow for much more than that. And then the outpatient building, as Jamie pointed in his graphic, we're looking at an on-building sign and then a pedestrian-level canopy sign as well there. This kind of gives better shots. This would be Livingston Ambulatory North. This sign currently exists. This would be the south end along Livingston. Right now, there is a logo here that is being removed with the completion of the ambulatory center or of the orthopedic surgery center, which will be in two years. This is showing the ground plane donor sign up top on the canopy of the same building. As we go across the campus, this is the conference center. This would be the potential for the on-building sign, again, facing into the campus. This is a rendering showing the digital sign that would be out in front of the main entrance to the conference center. So those people are coming in. This is Research Building 3 and 4. Again, this sign is up and exists. This is the one we're looking for additional approval on. And then again, it's a, it's a twin of the two that are currently on the building. And then this is the donor opportunity for the D building. And you won't, you wouldn't be able to see it, but there would be a pedestrian level on the canopy, again, with the same, same signage.
Thank you. Much better than. Does anyone have any questions?
All right.
Go ahead.
Thanks. On sign number five, is that to scale, that digital?
Yes, if you're familiar, if you're familiar with their campus, they have two ground-level pedestrian signs. They're called a primary and secondary. The secondary is 10-foot high. We're looking to be a little bit lower than that, so it would be smaller. What's going to dictate the true height of that is there's two screen sizes being considered. And if they go with a larger screen, it might, it might bump it up, but they're not going to be any higher than what is currently on the ground plane.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was. And you mentioned it addresses conferences that are scheduled at the facility or something like that. This bullet also sell advertising?
No, no, it's only, it's associated with promoting what programs are going on there. It may have like health-related messaging that the hospital does throughout. If you've ever been on their campus in the different lobbies, they have, they, they have digital displays that promote, you know, well-being and well, well-care. So it may have something like that interspaced with, but it'll all be programmatic.
Got you. And pretty high-quality digital.
Yes, that's, the resolution is going to be like watching your TV.
Thanks. Is there any, anyone in the audience that has any questions? Anyone else that'd like to speak? Now, this is a graphics plan, so we don't need to.
Correct.
Correct? So we just need the motion to prove the application? It's pretty simple. You just make the options.
Motion to approve it, but you.
Well, because it's a grad plan, you don't need a finding.
We don't need a finding of plan. There's no variance being requested.
Motion to approve the application number GC23-001.
Let's just second that. Okay, we can vote.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Rumble?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Here.
Yes, and it's. Yes, and it's approved, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
That was my first, um, motion.
Uh, yeah, for the record, Mr. Williams had to recuse himself from this, uh, and did not sit up front during the presentation.
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, that page I gave you is just the front page of the actual plan, it's in your packets. Uh, if you could sign up where the draft image and stamp is and date it. And that'll become part of the record that this was approved of.
I need that paper again, because he normally does all the motions, and so I didn't even think to.
I know, so. Okay, we'll call our second case, G C two-three dash zero zero three, one-six-one, East Campus View Boulevard. Hi, thank you, please state your name for the record.
So that's the ring, um, zoning resources, and today I'm working with Sheets at one-six-one East Campus View Boulevard.
Great, and whose case is this?
Mine as well.
Oh, there we.
Okay. Uh, so this is the Sheets, uh, one of about thirteen or fourteen, the commission has done, but uh, in deference of our new commissioners, we'll go through the whole rigmarole, uh, to the commission. Uh, G C twenty-three dash zero zero three, located at one-six-one East Campus View Boulevard. Is located at the southeast corner of East Campus View Boulevard and High Cross Boulevard. Site is within the far north Columbus Communities Television, which is of a C P V Commercial Plan District. Site is developed with a restaurant. Surrounding uses include primarily commercial uses, which include eating and drinking establishments, offices, and hotels. Uh, site is being developed with a Sheets fuel station and a convenience store. The applicant proposes both permanent and temporary signage. Uh, we can address the temporary signage first, next slide. Uh, the applicant requests install four banners, two temporary signs. The banners will be used to promote onsite activities such as the announcement in the store, products that will be offered, onsite hiring events. The temporary signs will be installed on light poles and will display a countdown to when, uh, when the store will open. Will also provide, promote hiring events and information, next slide. Okay, so back to the first slide. Yeah. All right, so variances are being requested for the banners are to increase the number of allowed banners from one to four. To increase the display time for banners from thirty days to one hundred and fifty days for banners D one and D two. To ninety days for banner A, and five days for banner, uh, F three. We're also asking to increase the graphic area of a banner from sixteen square feet, sixty-three point eight-six square feet for banner A. At thirty-two square feet for banner F three. Uh, temporary on premises signs, uh, the variances are to increase the number of allowed temporary signs from one two, and to increase the height of a temporary sign from eight feet to eleven feet. Uh, these are temporary signs, which will be valid for one year, three hundred and sixty-five days. Okay, back to the permanent signage. There you go, yeah. Uh, permanent signs will be installed on both the fuel canopy and store. The main identification sign that will be suspended from the fuel canopy is neither a wall sign, actually, this is different. Uh, what was that sign that Dana's highlighting right now is the, uh, sign that was considered not quite a projecting sign. But that staff didn't really have a way of identifying, just said that they need a variance, but I believe the applicant has revised their plan to install that directly on the canopy, is that correct Rebecca?
That's correct, there, there was a revision to make those wall signs.
So they'll no longer be suspended, they'll be directly mounted onto the canopy. So variances being requested for the permanent signage is to increase the graphic area for a side wall sign, that'd be different. Uh, from sixteen square feet to twenty-six square feet. And the rear wall, rear wall sign from zero square feet, which is only allowed on side wall sign. From zero first square feet to thirteen square feet. Uh, the other variances is to allow signs which are not specific, this was the variance that was, should be stricken to allow signs that are not specifically prohibited. But which would not comply with the division, so because these sheet signs are going to be direct mounted to the canopy, that provision no longer applies. Uh, next would be the ground sign. There you go. To reduce the percentage of the sign utilized for identification from fifty percent to forty point five percent. So that Sheet's, uh, block should be fifty percent, but it's only forty point five percent of the sign. Following, finally, the last variance, it can increase the graphic area of the canopy sign from eight point three-one square feet to the canopy. At thirteen point five-seven square feet. Uh, the rise ground sign is reducing, and these are the planning comments, the ground sign. The revised ground sign is reducing height. compatible with neighboring signs along Campus View Corridor, consistent with Far North Area Guidelines. Uh, the Division of Traffic Management has no comments, and city staff recommend approval. Staff can recommend approval, as the banner and temporary signs will be limited. Staff will recommend approval of the permanent wall signs if the variances are negative. Staff recommends approval, this has changed from what, uh, you were probably reading, because, uh, again, in the planning comment, the applicant has modified the ground sign from a pole sign and revised it to the sign you see here, which is reduced in height and is now compatible with neighboring signs along Campus View Corridor, consistent with the Far North Area Guidelines. The only condition we're requesting is that this ground sign, uh, the automatic copy portion will be limited to fuel pricing. Uh, that Mr. Chairman will turn it back over to you.
Uh, go ahead and say your case.
Uh, this is, again, yet one more Sheet's case that we have here, and the temporary sign variances that we are asking for are the ones that we always ask for, which, um, are four phases of temporary signs that identify the store, announce the kind of products we have in the store, because they do hope for this restaurant. And also, more importantly, we try to get, uh, local folks to be hired by the store. Um, we find a few resident who lives close to the store, those are your most reliable workers and workforce members. So we, uh, focus a lot of attention on getting local employees, including three, three different in-person hiring events. So a lot of our temporary signage is related to that. For the permanent signs, they are, we did modify the canopy sign because, um, it was a hanging sign that didn't quite fit a lot of different zoning codes, bunches, so now it's a, a truly a wall sign on the canopy. Um, and the other signage, uh, that we're asking variances for really is related to the fact that, um, we have a great number of, uh, traffic coming up from south to north, just that particular site has, um, the way that crosswords, the, the, the roads around Crosswoods work there is that you go in, um, one of the lower, uh, southern road, and then you come up High Cross, so you come in dimension, and then up High Cross to Campus View, and then out. So it's more of a circular pattern, and so we need signage that's coming on the, that's on the south side of the, uh, the building. Other than that, I'm happy to take in questions.
Yeah, I just, if you could, you, you definitely submitted a long statement of hardship in your application, and I'm very familiar with that area, Crosswoods, and and it is a little bit, uh, of, of a different configuration. Um, and, and that is the reason for your hardship today that you're requesting is just because of the location and
It's the location, and the fact that is, I mean, obviously, it's a multi-use premises, we have a gas can, we have a restaurant, we've got the drive-through, we can order anything, can a sandwich to the back, you know, have a pack of batteries. So we have a lot of communication that we need to do with the temporary signs because of the nature of the store. And again, uh, I, we view the hardship for the, the other signage as simply that we need, um, to be able to address the traffic coming from the south.
How long are the temporary banners for, did you say six months is what I heard?
So it's four, it is four different phases, the first phase is when the construction, uh, fences put up. And then we only put two signs up, D one and D two, which are the red ones. Um, there you are, and then, uh, those are up for a while until we are able to build a canopy, which just, surprisingly, only takes a few months. Um, and so, then they put the blue sign up, which has digital ways of contacting the, uh, the store for employment, including texting and, uh, website information. And then, uh, that's, and that would be phase two, and then phase three are the specific hiring events. Um, the specific, specific hire, hiring events are three in-person hiring events focused on trying to get local, local workers. And so there's signage, but that, that is phase three, and it is for only five weeks. And then when the construction fence comes down, everything comes down. All, all those things I just described, and that, and then they put, they start doing the stop, uh, training and the stocking and that kind of part before you open. And that's when the, uh, pole signs that are on the next slide, um, go up.
Thank you. Uh, and you've accepted the conditions the city's asked for?
Yeah, that's fine, of course.
Any other questions?
I said, I'm sorry, this is not a hundred percent relevant, but, um, is it common to have a drive-through with Sheets, or is this a new?
Uh, the Sheets, when we have the smaller, smaller sites, we don't have a drive-through, but they are, um, pushing, in this area, we have more and more drive-throughs, and so I would say, and the ones I've worked on so far, I'd say only like twenty percent do not have them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this case? Okay, we have a bunch of variants, so, uh, can I have a motion, um, related to the facts of this case?
I, uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the finding of facts presented by the city staff and the applicant to be true, valid, and reasonable. And then we proceed, proceed with the voting of this, uh, variance.
Okay. And we have a second, great, um, a motion of eye to approve finding of fact, or the motion from, from Mr. Hoy? Sound of eye?
Eye.
Eye, any opposing? Okay, and now we need a motion to approve the application. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve variance, uh, variances, um, including the, uh, conditions to limit the fuel pricing as identified, uh, based on the finding of fact.
You have, you have to have, I'm sorry. You have to have the, 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 um, summary of position and outstanding.
No, no, it's, it's all done already. I'll second. Okay, we call, call roll.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Dura Hoy?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Rumble?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Your commitment?
Yes, and it's approved, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We can call our next case, um, application, case number G C two-three dash zero zero four, ten fifty North Fourth Street. Hello, um, can you please state your record for the case?
My name is Jennifer Bender, I'm with Dana, it's my company, I'm, uh, representing you.
Do you spell that for Tony, please?
D A N I T E S.
No, I meant your name.
J E N N I F E R. Ask him, Ms. Bender, B E N D E R.
Great, thank you, and Adam, your case.
Yep, uh, record, you're gonna use yourself on this, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is my case, yeah, for the record, I, um, my partner represents, uh, the applicant, I think, yes, but I'm gonna just continue talking through and administratively, that's okay with everybody? And Jamie, go ahead, no, I'm sorry, Adam, go ahead.
Uh, G C twenty-three dash zero zero four, um, ten fifty North Fourth Street is located on the southeast corner of North Fourth Street and Detroit Avenue. It is known AR three apartment residential, and is part of the Italian Village. The point six seven acre site is being developed with a sixty-two unit apartment building with commercial tenant space on the ground floor. Surrounding uses are an eating and drinking establishment to the north, retail to the west, and a mix of single and multifamily potential to the south and east. The applicant proposes to install three permanent tenant wall signs and a canopy sign directed to a street abutting complex. Variances are being requested to increase the maximum, uh, graphic area and to reduce the setback from two feet to zero feet. The, um, Italian Village, I'm sorry, this is planning, the Italian Village East redevelopment plan does not include graphics design guidelines. As such, planning has no comment on the request, but notes that the Italian Village Commission has already issued a certificate of appropriateness for, for the design. The current C O A does not include the variances, as such, the proposal will need to return to the I V C for a recommendation of, on the requested variance. Um, the Division of Traffic Management has no comment, and the, uh, Italian Village Area Commission permits approval of the request. Staff connect recommend approval as the sign will serve to identify the uses attributed to the wall signs, and because said signs would not need variances, and the building was zoned appropriately. Um, yes.
Thank you, you can present your case.
The donor has already gotten, had already gone before the I V C and gotten the slate neon sign.
Can you move closer to them, I'm sorry.
Or you can move it closer to you.
Or you could, yeah, fair.
Uh, the tenant, however, the tenant names would need to be within the sign band, which are above windows. Because it was a AR three, I believe, is what it was zone, um, it, it falls under residential, so they're not allowed to have more than one sign technically, and those signs are not allowed to be above six, eight feet, something fairly low. These signs, the, the slate sign is a neon sign, which fits within the I V C. And the tenant signs, the tenant named strips are non-illuminated, externally illuminated by existing blue stick lights, so fits well within I V C would approve and has approved. And that it fits within the sign band and, uh, that is on the building, so it seems appropriate. In, in look, it just doesn't fall within the code.
Does anyone have any questions?
So, you're saying that your hardship is that, um, it, it just, I was like clear, clarified for me, so we're gonna.
The hardship is that the building was zoned AR three, which falls under residential zoning, and the residential zoning only allow, allows for the one wall sign, and it only allows for, um, I'm gonna say, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it was six or eight feet overall height for the sign, the wall sign. So, and all of these signs are to, uh, higher than the building. Is consistent with the rest of of, all of the businesses around it, and, uh, if it were zoned differently, it would not be.
Any other questions? Is there anyone, uh, else that would like to ask questions or speak to your case? All right, um, can I have a motion? From anyone here about the finding of fact?
Yes, I could make a motion, finding of facts, uh, that was presented by the staff and by the applicant. And also the explanation of the hardship presented with the AR three, uh, limiting it to one sign, but asking for three, uh, I'd like to make this motion to, to move on and have a vote on this variance.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Is it, do we, should we roll call for these, these motions, or is it just a sign of eye, I mean?
You should do a roll call, it's probably easier.
Let's do a roll call then, we'll do it that way.
Should we, should we document that he recused himself before?
I did already.
He did, he did already. Ms. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Rumble?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Uh, for the record, uh, I refuse myself from this vote, and can we now have a, a motion to approve the application?
I have a motion to approve, um, application G C two-three dash zero zero four.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we can call a roll.
Mr. Rumble?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Augustine?
Yes.
And, uh, I'm recusing myself for the record, but it's approved.
I, it sounded as if we needed to go back to the I V C.
That's what planning's, um, initial comment was during the uh, staff, and to get final site, you'll need to include the variances, um, for their recommendation, but that's something to work out with, uh, commercial site, so, or Italian Village, if you contact Italian Village and say, is this certificate of protest valid for both, and they sign off on it here?
Valid for both the variance.
C of A and the variances, yeah.
So like now, at this point, all. So like now, at this point, all the sign company would need to do is file for a variance because they got the COA from Italian Village, got our variance for the three tenants, so I'll have three different.
Well, for permits.
Yeah, for five permits, that should be pretty extreme, I think.
Yeah, they need all three of them.
Very simple. Good luck.
We need to come back here for the.
No, no.
You give the three signs.
We need, we just gotta.
Yeah, I know, right. Okay, we can call our next case, case number GC23-005, 1465 and 1595 London Groveport Road. Anyone? Alrighty, you've already been sworn in. You've spelled your name, I think, for the record. Tony's got it. And this is, whose case is this?
It'll be mine.
All right, Mr. Kirk, fire away.
All right, so GC23-005, 1465 and 1595 London Groveport Road is located on the south side of London Groveport Road, approximately 2,150 feet east of Lothorn Road. This zoning is M of Manufacturing District. The approximately 100 acre site consists of three separate parcels. The northeast parcel is currently developed with a warehouse while the other two parcels consist of undeveloped armland. So the north are similar warehouses and logistics offices. To the east is a railway line and a small residential development, featuring multi-unit dwellings. To the south is more undeveloped armland and to the west is a former quarry. The applicant proposes to establish a graphics plan for future logistics park. The graphics plan will include a total of 11 ground signs and multiple wall and directional signs. 10 of the ground signs would not be allowed by code without variance, hence the graphics plan. The signs will provide both directional information and building identification information. Planning supports the applicant's proposal by requests reducing the height of the type A-style monuments from six feet eight inches to six feet even. This reduction in monument height will bring the applicant's proposal into compliance with Columbus Citywide Planning Policies Commercial Design Guidelines, which recommends that the monument-style signs be no greater than six feet in height. Division of Traffic Management has no comments. City Department's recommendation is for approval. Staff can recommend approval as the signage proposed in this plan generally matches that of the surrounding Manufacturing District uses in this area. This area, if you've been down to, you know, near Rickenbacker, it's a lot of these personal logistics parks, certain. We do recommend the consideration of the condition that planning suggested, having that, the height of that type A monument sign be reduced to six feet in height. We feel that, you know, reducing it by eight inches isn't going to make a huge difference and since it will bring it into compliance with the citywide planning policies, why not? Chair?
Thank you. Go ahead and present your case.
I would like to add that originally in part of this, we pointed out that if you would go through type B, perhaps?
Sorry?
It's type B, type C?
Yes.
It's along the tines.
It was type B.
These were reduced to six foot, which means that we removed one of the tenant, the two tenant panels and dropped it down to the six foot overall. Now, the, the top of it, the LG Logistics Park, technically by code needs to be 50% of the sign. Part of what we were asking for here is that that not be necessary within this part because it would, it would take up too much of the sign and make it so that the tenants were too small to read. We are hoping that that that's, that's a possibility because the, the big trucks that are coming in here are gonna be, these are all not illuminated with reflective vinyl on them. So they're not, they're not necessarily going to be jumped right at you.
Do you have a rendering of your, are you asking to amend your application right now? Are you asking to amend your application for the first time right now?
I don't think it's an amendment to the application, simply because it's in the.
Okay.
I think she's justifying the request.
Got, okay. That picture's just old, is what you're saying?
Yes, it's updated. These were updated.
Okay.
Did you send updated, the updates to my email? Okay, this was, this was the most recent one that I was able to find. This is the one that planning had signed off on. But if, if you could resend that, we can get that one stamped.
Sure, absolutely.
Does that match the chart here where it has the height? There's a chart, yeah, because you're talking about the height.
Do most of them say as far as the right-of-way over 200 feet?
I don't know, but they have them all listed by sign types and then area height. It's very nice, well organized on what.
We did update that as well.
So it still said, I mean, are you, are you accepting the recommendations by city staff to six feet?
Well, let me, let me address that. We have accepted the recommendations for all of the signs with the exception of the type A, which was the original sign to be out on the road, the only one that was allowable by code. And it's already permitted, built, and about to be installed.
What height is it?
Six, eight.
Okay, that's what this says here.
Yeah.
We have an approved permit for it and had an approved permit for it before we even applied for the. The.
Graphics plan.
It should have been exempted from the graphics plan.
Is there anyone else that has questions? Anyone? Anyone out in the audience have questions? We do not need a motion for a finding of fact as a graphics plan, correct? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the applications?
Wouldn't we do not the type A style?
We don't need, it's not a, there's not a variance.
It's gonna be exempted.
Okay.
The conditions move.
Ms. Bender will send an updated plan to exempt that one and then we'll, if you guys are okay with the graphics, you just sign that front page and then attach to the.
And you'd also said there wasn't updated on height for the type B signs as well?
Yes.
Okay.
All the other signs fell within the requests.
Correctly updated.
I'll make a motion to approve the graphics plan application GC23-005. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I think we can go ahead and vote on it.
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Ms. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, thank you. Your application approved.
And Jamie, I have a question.
Chair?
I don't, I didn't see the agenda for this, the, I think they often show on stage the.
Oh, was that your preliminary expansion? That was an expansion of an approved commission order?
We were gonna try, we were gonna try and extend in a few years.
Okay, you have the case number or you go right ahead? So.
You can, you can give it to Jamie after then. Is this?
That's an extension, so if we can just get the board to extend the, usually approved commission order.
Is it one of the cases tonight or?
No, it was one of them approved last year and it's about, it's about to expire.
Oh, got it.
They have one year to extend it or they have to comply. So, but if you have a case number.
Why don't we call our, yeah, why don't we call our next case while you go ahead and, and we'll, we can get back on the record. Let's call case number GC23-006. 4747 Sawmill Road. Hello again.
Hello again.
I think Tony has your name for the record, and this, Steve, your case?
Yeah, 4747 Sawmill Road. It's located on southwest corner of Sawmill Road and Dublin Road. It's owned CPD and is located in Northwest Civic Association. The 9.9 acre site is currently developed as a Giant Eagle supermarket. Surrounding uses include multi-unit dwellings to the west, single unit dwellings and a medical office south, another medical office and commercial to the east, and a shopping plaza with more commercial and restaurants to the north. The applicant proposes to repeal and replace the existing graphics plan for Giant Eagle, including two ground signs and seven wall signs. Graphics plans have been previously approved for this property in 2010, 2011, and 2013. Planning support the proposal as presented. The Northwest Plan Guidelines state that new signage should be designed to be logical and complementary to the overall design of a storefront. The proposal is consistent with this guideline and therefore supported. The plan also recommends that signage should be oriented to both pedestrians and vehicles. Monument-style signs should be no more than six feet in height or, or monument-sized, style signs no more than six feet in height are recommended. Therefore, planning encourages the replacement of the existing large pole sign with a small monument sign, but does not condition a support on this request. The Division of Traffic Management has no comments. The Northwest Civic Association recommends approval of this request. And staff can recommend approval as the proposal meets the guidelines of the Northwest Plan and the digital signs are complementary and will help direct customers to the graphics.
Can you go ahead and, was that your case?
I'm working with lawyer in the chair and today this is whether they're weaving, sorry. Giant Eagle on Sawmill Road is rebranding to become a market district restaurant, grocery store, with associated uses such as Starbucks, the State Liquor Store, and the park seats. So, and it's a large site. They have two, two, two ground signs to indicate those entrances. They have wall signs to indicate all various uses, including the drive-through pharmacy signage. I would say that the reason we needed to do this graphics plan is one of the signs had not been included in the prior graphics plan.
That's what I was wondering.
That's why we're here, is I have wanted extra sign. So we needed to reveal, replace the old graphics plan to include additions.
Got it. Anyone have any questions? Anyone else like to speak to this case? This is a revised graphics plan, so no need to vote on a finding of fact. So can I have a motion to approve the application?
I'll make the motion to approve the application. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. And we call roll.
Yeah, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Ms. Augustine?
Yes.
Rumbaugh? Yes.
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Your commitment?
Yes, your application's approved. Thank you. And the last case, case GC23-007, 721 Grandview Crossing.
Hey, Commissioner, you may notice that of the six cases tonight, three of them have been graphics plans. Two of them have been repealed and replaced. And the reason we do that is so our own clear staff that would have to hunt down four or five different iterations of the plan. It's all consolidated in one. That way, you go to the zone as well. One of the questions I think Mike, you had for Kevin Lillard, was how did, how did you find information on the plan? You go to the zoning map and find out the zoning district, the overlay, any public action, whether it's a council variance, a board zoning does one of the graphics action. And from those links, you can find out any graphics plans. So, for example, Easton used to have seven or eight, and they consolidated them into one. Then of course, about two months after that consolidation, came back for another revision, so they just consolidated and repealed and replaced. So that's why we have someone repeal and replace us. For graphics.
Thanks for your answer, Chair. Thank you for your knowledge. Okay, who's, can you, gentlemen, please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Dave Perry. I'm here as a consultant to GBX and Thrive Companies. I have been sworn.
Joel wasn't here when, so.
Joel, Joel, me too. He's himself and he's sworn.
I'm Joel Lilly with Thrive Companies. Since the representative developer for the development.
Mr. Lilly, do you represent that your testimony here tonight would be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And whose case is this? Jamie?
This is mine.
Yeah.
Okay, GC23-007, 721 Grandview Crossing Way. It's located approximately 140 feet north of Dublin Road and approximately 890 feet east of Grandview Avenue. Site is owned CPD, Commercial Plan Development District, and has not been any area controlled. The 55 acre site is zoned in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District and is being developed with a mixed-use urban development, which will include office, retail, restaurant, residential, approximately 1,058 dwelling units, a hotel, senior living, and private park usage. Okay, direct your attention to this slide. The applicant proposes a graphics plan for all Grandview Crossing, divided into two subareas. Subareas A, which is the southern portion of the southeast, and Subarea B, which is the rest. Subarea A is defined as the city of Columbus area of Grandview Crossing, running on Dublin Road and extending to the north side of planned buildings L and M as depicted on the graphics plan area delineation, and being approximately 120 feet to 140 feet north of Dublin Road right-of-way. I'm sorry. Secondly, being 120 feet to 140 feet north of Dublin Road right-of-way, as depicted as area B, is defined as all Grandview Crossing in the city of Columbus except in area A. The applicant is requesting a graphics plan, sorry, staff director. I'm missing a page. So just to summarize, if you recall our Easton graphics plan, which we were just discussing, the applicant drew up pretty much a blue line, said anything within the blue line, which is approximately two to three hundred feet away from any public right-of-way, anything goes, with some minor limitations. Staff proposed that to the applicant on this case as well, given that all the interior streets will be private and virtually every sign would request or require either graphics plan of its own or variance. You may recall the last graphics plan, which was being repealed and replaced in this one, the BMW building handled by Stephen a few months ago. So having said that, staff has recommended approval. There are a few caveats. There are a few conditions that the applicant is agreeing to. And let me just go ahead and say that for the record, staff can recommend approval. The proposed graphics plan, the site is being developed with myriad abuses along manly private streets. This plan will alleviate the need for multiple variances as the site takes shape. Further, the applicant has committed to co-compliant regulations for signs with automatic changeable copy. For example, the display will remain static for eight seconds. Roof-mounted signs can be placed on buildings with two or fewer occupiable stories. However, a building that has three stories or higher will require revision to the graphics plan. So they'll have to come back and place it and reply again. And finally, all graphics within area A, South East Corner there, will commit to the standards of the Community Protocol Overlay, found in chapter 33, 17.706. So any revisions or change to any of the graphics that don't match those standards will have to come back for a revised graphics plan. And with that, staff is recommending.
Mr. Perry? Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Members of the commission, do you have, is it okay to play about a two-minute video to show you Grandview Crossing?
Okay.
The building, the building that was on the right was the BMW. Thank you, Dane and Jamie. Okay, so Grandview Crossing is a development of Thrive Companies. It's 55 acres, 40, about 40 of which is in Columbus and about 15 is in Grandview Heights. And all, every street within Grandview Crossing is a private street. There are no internal public streets. If you look at the screen, the area noted as area A at the. If you look at the screen, the area noted as uh area A at the lower right corner. Uh, the Columbus area of Grandview Crossing has uh that little bit of frontage on Dublin Road. And area A is what Jamie referred to, staff requested the um community commercial overlay graphics. Provisions uh for that, which um as you know, limits ground signs, uh limits, limits the height and area of ground signs. Um, and prohibits various things like off-premise graphics and flashing signs and and other things. The Dublin Road frontage to the left of area A is all in Grandview Heights. And the primary entrance, you know, thank you where the arrow is, the primary entrance on Dublin Road is where staff has the arrow. It's entering from Grandview Heights and then, and then into the site. The uh, this, this development is huge, um fifty-five acres in total, forty in Columbus, it's five hundred million dollars plus. And the distances are huge, the, the um BMW graphics plan that you heard several months ago. Is towards the back left and um. There was, uh, there were variances for a wall sign for BMW's uh corporate headquarters and, and a very small. Ground sign and what, what thrive is running into, um, I've looked at um two or three, two or three of these areas with staff and. What we're running into is that every building is going to require variances for something. And so we've proposed the graphics plan uh with uh the code, code compliant area A. Where there, where there is a little bit of public street frontage and then um uh broad permission for the, the private area with private streets.
And you guys are agreeable to the conditions suggested by city staff?
Yes.
Yeah.
And they're, they're incorporated in the, the graphics plan that staff distributed.
Yeah, graphics plan is certainly warranted in this development. Um, any, any other questions from mission? Okay.
Yes, um, has Grandview Heights seen this proposal too, and just wondered what they said about it, I know it's. More independent.
Um, Grandview Heights has not seen this application, but graphics have been discussed with Grandview Heights. And Grandview Heights has approved the ground signs for the two entrances, there's an entrance on Grandview Avenue in, on the Grandview Heights. Portion also, and then as um Grandview, Grandview Heights doesn't have an annual called a graphics plan. Um, but as, as thrive takes individual buildings through the planning commission, the, the graphics will be discussed.
That looks great.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions?
Do you, I know it's a, it's a plan and it's a big area, um, do you have any sort of um? Indication where the changeable copy signs are gonna be located?
Changeable copy? Yeah, some of them would rotate, uh, yeah.
Copy that would change.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it would, I, I'm not expecting anything on the above tenant status. Uh, we might have something over by the market that would be facing the park, so that building right there that looks like it's um. I guess inside down J on the right of the main entrance. Um, that's connected to our park, we're gonna have a food market right there with about ten vendor stalls that's under construction right now. Um, part of the rationale for that signage on top of the first floor is we might have a graphic sign that looks out over the park. Not really visible from Dublin Road, but it would be something that if we're doing events in the park, everybody would know where the market is and drive traffic there.
Like Columbus Commons?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's one example, there, there might be other, but um part of, part of the approach to this is that. Um, or the, the major approach to this is that all the internal signage isn't visible externally.
Yeah. Any other questions? Anyone out in the audience, there's nobody left? Uh, any questions? Okay, it's a graphics claim again, so no need to uh. Have a motion for finding of fact, so can I have a motion to approve the application as presented?
I have a motion to approve um application number G C two, three dash zero, zero, seven.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we can roll together. All right, Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Rumbel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Milton? Yes, the application's approved, thanks guys.
Very good.
Thank you. Have we uh found our uh application number or? Can we make a motion without the case number, Jane?
Uh, we can look it up. You don't have the case number? All right, let's look it up. So Mike, this is a tutorial. When you find a site, you click on it, hit the layer tab. Nope.
Don't think that's been, oh yeah, this were.
So that'll show up as layer that has been approved, so G C thirty dash.
What, Mike? Slide. Okay, um, so we need a, what, what, we need a motion to extend?
Hold on, let's see if this is the right one, hit the air button, just see if it. Okay, so that's the only graphics plan or graphics variance on the site, so G C twenty dash zero three four, the applicant is requesting. An extension of the commission order for one year.
Can I have a motion to extend the uh, the order?
The number was G C twenty dash zero three four.
And how long are we extending it?
One year.
One year? Just.
I'll give a motion to extend um G C twenty dash zero, zero, three, four for one year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we just do it with a sign of eyes? Roll call, okay. Ms. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Rumbel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalleres?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Eric Hooperman? Yes. You're extended. Okay.
Oh, Brad. One more step.
That's the move, my coaching softball that starts in thirty minutes, and my first game, and my god, it's gonna take my breath.
Can we make a motion?
No. Sure.
All right, thanks everyone.